Welcome to the Town Act and Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, February 3rd, 2022 at 6:00 P.M. I guess we'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge your allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any minutes to approve of peruse, so let's do that again.
Well, actually, I did it. I don't know if they got printed off.
No, they didn't get printed.
They didn't. Okay.
So we'll just table it for the next meeting.
Sure.
But we never approved the two in January, did we?
I think we did.
Yeah, I think.
We just have two more that we haven't even seen yet.
Right.
Well, I don't think we approved that one because that one has the change you required in the moratorium, and the change as written is wrong.
All right, we'll table one.
Yeah, I'm okay to table one. I'm just saying.
Yep. Well, we'll just table the minutes.
Let me have that copy.
Oh, you need that back.
And then everybody next meeting, we can look at all four steps real quick. You know, ask them to get them out before time. You know, at least email them to us. By the way, we can just come out and prove them.
Yep, yep.
Old business, Mr. McFoy. We're gonna have one of us who gets the probably we have to sign and one of us who gets the changes.
Who's reading? I think John's gonna read, though. Look at this one. Somebody, maybe Bernard's got it.
You want that, John?
Well, I'll read the conditions. I.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, the first one I got was the notation about grinding. No more than 14 days total per year.
It's right. There's a number next to it, so.
Oh.
Change. Where's the change?
Number nine.
Number nine states existing imported fully cured asphalt pile shall be removed within.
No, he's talking about the grinding one, right? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, the grinding one. Do you know what that one was?
They're all under operation.
Okay, yeah, number seven. Yeah, we're looking at seven then.
Yeah, so two, three.
Greg Gavin.
He's the change.
That's one of them, yeah.
So that's the one John's talking about.
Okay. And the, before I do that, he was gonna.
You want me to read it?
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
We need to slow.
Number seven, erosion control mix may be used as BNP if needed to protect natural resource area from stump grinding recycling pad. Grinding wood products will only happen for a total 14 days and operations will coincide with rock crushing hours of operation.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah. And is, the pad is now on the.
The pad's on here.
Okay, because that was one of the changes we had to make.
Yes.
Right there.
Okay, you just read about erosion control mix.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that was the grinding.
It included the 14 days but also surrounding the area of the pad?
Yeah.
Okay. Asphalt needs to be removed within three months?
Yeah.
That's number nine. Existing imported fully cured asphalt pile shall be removed within three months of the plan. Conditional use will be considered at a future date for this material.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's gone.
Nice.
Good.
Cost of $16,885.
Okay, next?
Uh, next was the, it's actually the minutes aren't quite right. It was the 14 days total. We'd originally said not more than twice per year. I think we just changed that to 14 days total.
14 total and coinciding with rock crushing hours of operation. Yep, that's on here.
There was a note about the stumps. Get exactly where it was on the right side, and we wanted to make it overt about stumps from the site will be ground and stay on the site.
Yep, that's item C under reclamation.
Okay.
Any stumps native to the site shall be ground and utilized on-site.
That's what you guys said you wanted me to do?
Yeah.
Well.
What's your concern?
We asked for generated on-site because stumps native to the site is any, could be interpreted as any tree native to the site, which is going to be the same species as the stump he's bringing in. But it's totally up to the board. I mean, it's not exactly what we had terminology-wise, but.
Just. I don't really have a problem with that because what's the altern, if he brings in stumps of a like kind from another site, grinds them and uses them on his own site, what's the harm?
I know. We went through this last time.
You guys said you wanted the stumps on-site reused on-site.
That's right.
Anything native to the site stays on-site. Anything imported can be sold.
Right, it's kind of.
Yeah, it's just a choice. It's the word.
Semantics.
But I, obviously, I don't have a problem.
I don't either.
The way you worded it.
Because I believe.
I pretty much read the whole dictionary to figure out how to write this.
I don't think you did. I trust you smarter than that.
We came up with the verbiage, but. We'll just go to the next one.
That's, uh, did we have a burn?
I don't think it ended up being in here. It was supposed to be with number seven, or we didn't actually come to a conclusion of where the burn was going to be. We left it up to the applicant to decide what BNP he needed as opposed to dictating where a burn would go without fully having the information we needed.
Yeah, we talked about burn on the low side, but there really wasn't a low side.
Right. I think that's covered.
Okay, that's what I got.
And then the cash escrow.
Right.
Which is number eight.
Eight, yeah.
Cash cut. Cash escrow 3,000 shall be added to the existing reclamation account for wood waste area reclamation. All right, I think that was about it.
So what do you need for a motion? I know, I don't know what it needs to do.
Yeah, Tom. I'll make a motion that we accept the additions to the conditional use permit for Seth McFoy and approve his conditional use permit.
I need to copy it down on that motion. Just, did you get it?
No.
We're gonna use the camera for the.
Yeah, we're gonna, Rafferty's gonna review the.
Actually, that's, it's a good idea, though.
Just to make sure we have the actual motion.
Motion to approve the.
The expanded conditional use permit.
Expanded conditional use permit and conditions. Discussion.
All in favor? Four, nothing. Which one do you want to sign, that one or this one? Does it matter, Seth?
They're both the same.
Today is the third?
Yes.
Sign those over.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, if you guys want to keep on counting it. Frame it longest conditional use ever.
Oh, no, that was not.
It's far from it, unfortunate way.
If you come back, you know, we could have a good time, you know, you never know.
I'll back.
We can make that one longer.
Do you guys have any information on Raff?
Yeah. You're coming, I know you're coming back. You miss us. That's the problem.
So I've been nothing but a thing on active.
But, you know, enjoy your property while you're here. Fish, go ice fishing.
I don't have much patience for fishing.
Somehow I believe.
Go visit your neighbors.
Yeah.
I try, I just can't.
Hey, get to know your neighbors. They might be nice.
Well, parbo.
Yeah. They might make you cookies sometime. I should probably date mine too. That way you won't have to come back next week.
Why?
I didn't date it. I'll date it before you run off with them.
So we only need four signatures? I didn't have to pay $12 to get your life for them.
Well. Something's an enjoyable cost, man.
But we can hold on to them if you want Pat to sign them.
I'm off that.
As frustrating as it's been for you, at least hopefully it will be profitable for you because for as many nights as you have come here, we've been here.
We do.
And this is what we get. So hopefully you will benefit. We wish you luck.
You want to keep that one for the cops?
Uh, yeah.
This is for the, for the.
Yeah, well, it has a stamp on it for the registry to record, so that's free advice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you smile.
I'm gonna just run out and get this too, so it stays there. It doesn't get lost.
Take care. Bye now.
One second, Dave. All right, uh, next up, David Peppin. Right, yeah, um, what, from what we understand, there's some changes that Matt said that he had made within that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what part of the paperwork gone.
Yeah.
And we, I talked to him through, with John, and then Jason talked to him from home, you know? And we felt that it would be kind of a waste of your money and waste of our time, so. Because you're not at that point in the process yet. So that's why they got canceled, so. Other than that, I mean.
Do you have any, any questions?
I do. I have some questions about the application. These are probably just ministerial, but.
I'll ask you later down.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, no problem. Okay, so any application we receive is supposed to have the name and address of the applicant or authorized agent. And I know that you've got a number of corporate entities going on here, but the only applicant is our Peppin and Sons, Inc. Also required is a deed to prove ownership of the property.
Okay.
This property, at least in the deeds I see, is deeded to David J. Peppin Gravel and Mann Road Pit Replacement LLC.
Okay.
You gave us a list of entities owned by you and your wife. I don't believe I saw Mann Road Pit Replacement being one of those entities.
Okay.
So in any event, we need something, in my opinion, that shows either that you own Mann Pit Road, uh, Mann Road Pit.
Okay.
Or if someone else owns it, then they need to join in this application because.
I'll get them to sign that they own, okay.
So there is a different owner. Yeah, they need to be on this app.
Yeah.
Okay?
There's definitely somebody else who owns it, yes.
So that was one thing, and.
Along those same lines, the second deed has Acton Main Land Exchange LLC.
Yeah.
Is that you guys?
You know what? What we did is a like an exchange, so it's probably complicated. What we'll do, now that we know, we're gonna put it back to our lawyer. I'm glad we had this so we can move forward. And we'll get it all straightened out, so it's not one, one owner and all that, and.
Okay.
It's probably on the way.
Yeah, that deed doesn't apply to this property, that's, I don't think.
So it happened because they did the land exchange.
Yeah.
A separate account had to be set up.
Yeah.
Money to go into. It couldn't go into our account at all to have the exchange.
Yeah.
So that, the one, the last one you just said, the Act of Land Exchange, that's what that was.
But that, if I understand it correctly, that one is not part of the pit. Is that right? The land exchange. There are two deeds as I'm reading this. One is a warranty deed, North Country Land to David Peppin and Mann Road, Mann Road Pit Replacement, Exhibit A. Then there is another deed. Let me make sure these aren't identical. September, of the same, to the same entities.
Yeah.
And let me just make sure the descriptions are different. Maybe they're not. That, actually, that might just be a duplicate copy of the same deed, but, I mean, bottom line is, you need to, yeah, you need to present the names of the applicants or their agents, someone authorized to act on their behalf, copies of the deeds that are involved in this.
Right.
The application, I believe, also is required to state the dimensions and the location for where you have, plan to have any buildings on the property.
Okay.
And there's been discussion about different dimensions.
Yeah, right, yes, yeah.
Yeah, but we will need that and the location.
Yeah.
So those were just two things that I noticed first out. Right, no, yeah, I was glad, you know, it appeared that maybe, you know, whatever was gonna happen tonight, that this wasn't gonna be a productive use of your time, that you were here and other people weren't. But I knew that I had these very preliminary issues that need to be resolved before we can go forward anyway, so it's not a waste.
That's right.
Of your time, which we don't like to waste anyone's time.
Yeah, we've got to roll this lot, and the little means sometimes a data, because there's always little things that get, like, picked up on.
Yeah.
That we can get straightened out, so the next time we'll move a step forward.
Exactly.
Yeah, we kind of ran into this a couple of months ago with another project that they didn't own the land, but they wanted to come forth.
Right, you can't.
And we can't.
It has to be the owner.
Right.
Has to be the owner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or you could get real permission was the other option.
Well, oh, it could be someone's agent or have power of attorney. Because the other thing that occurred to me, I actually presumed, I thought, I bet Mr. Peppin owns this other company and it just was an oversight. Now that we know that's not the case.
Right.
There is another owner. I think as we go further, even with that person's authorization, they want to participate, to me, not as an approval issue, but as an insurance issue. If you have this owned by different entities, we've got to make sure both of those entities have the proper insurance.
Right.
So.
We gotta straighten that out.
It highlights another issue.
Right, we don't think any of those properties.
It's not that they're owner. You own both of those companies. It's not a different owner.
Well, he's talking about the other properties. We don't own those anymore that are on it. We've got to make sure they're completely clear, and then we can.
Any, well, are you saying that, that Mr. Peppin or you as a family own Mann Road Pit Replacement?
Yes.
Ma'am, you are? Okay, because he said otherwise.
Isn't that the, isn't that the like exchange?
No, we sold Mann.
Yeah.
He's asking, we own that. We don't own it at all.
No, the one she, I think you're referring to is the Acton Main Land Exchange one.
Oh, okay.
But I think that's what.
What's Left LLC and the Acton Main Land Exchange. But in any event, it's fine if you need to research or whatever, but we have to know that each and every entity listed on the deed is an applicant for this or an agent of the applicant. That's the bottom line. If that proves to be you, great.
Should we go as far as bringing you in the coffee that proves we don't own those other properties?
If they're not involved in the pit, I don't see where we, it doesn't matter to us. But that's not our business, I don't think.
All right, yeah, because we don't own either one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You had to stop by this way.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, it's good to know that's the one we can straighten out.
Get that started and, yeah, and I hope that our viewers see that we do actually read these things. And scrutinize. There we go.
So we've been here, and we, I'm glad we came back tonight, because there's always gonna be little things, legal things that are gonna come up.
Yeah.
And it's gonna delay it, because we have a lot of things with the trails we're making, everything. They're gonna get a legal thing, or where the trail's gonna go and all that. It's gonna be tons. We're not gonna be able to get it through without going back to a lawyer and re-signing things and all that. So we're happy we got started tonight. It's a good start and anticipate the time to get us back on track again.
We love it.
So.
Yeah, anything?
Yeah, can you tell us a little bit more about the wash plant?
Yeah.
Just, just two simple paragraphs in here.
Basically, in our yard in Sanford, we take the material and we don't bring anything else in. We dig upon, not in the aquifer, even though we, I don't understand from the aquifer, where. I think we love the aquifer, you take it upon. We take that water, and we have a shaker that the water goes through, and it shakes out from the material that's already in the pit, nothing else. The material that's already there, we shake the dirt out of it, and it just falls in, and we sell that dirt. And we have to do that because to make inch and a half stone, it has to be washed because of code. And so there's nothing brought into the pit. The water is already there. It doesn't go into streams. It's all, we follow all the DEP things. We wash it right on the side of the pond, then it goes back into the pond. And that's pretty much that simple. It's nothing, we don't import anything.
Right, that was one of my questions was, are you watching any offsite materials?
No.
Can you put that in the?
Yes, you will, yeah.
It's sort of like, it's like an oversized gold mining operation, where they shake here and stuff.
What we do, and then it goes back in the same, you know, area. We do it on a shop, we dredge out the, kind of like a clay that they use underneath lawns that comes out its money. And even our stone, our other stone has to be washed, a lot of it, because it sticks better to concrete. You can't have it, you know.
Granularly, yeah.
Right, so it's mainly inch and a half stone for septic.
Yeah.
It has to be washed. And we don't do a lot of it, but, you know, it's just convenient to do it right there. So it doesn't impact the environment as far as anything brought in or anything to worry about. It's the natural material that's already there.
Are there wash plants where they take, they dig out someone's old leach field and wash it? And what do they do with old leach fields, stone?
I don't know anybody that takes an old leach field back, ever.
Yeah, what do they do? What do you do with that?
We don't do the excavator pile, but you know, I've never heard of an excavator in my lifetime ever bringing in from an old leach field to your property. I think what they do is they bury it outside. I'm guessing that.
Either that or they probably dig it up and haul it off.
Yeah, because we couldn't have, I couldn't imagine.
Right.
I couldn't imagine us, right, I couldn't imagine us making inch and a half stone and all, just some half, an old septic into that pile. That would be.
Just a question.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
And then the materials you dredge out of the ponds, you're saying it's, you said it was dirt, but is it like just granular sand pretty much that was on the stone or?
It's the same sand that gets washed out there, but some of it always sticks to the rock.
Yeah.
And not much anymore because it's more sophisticated. Now, the screen is a soap, they're getting 90% of it now. You can't have 1% on the septic.
Mm-hmm.
So you just wash it.
Where do you sell that material to? Is it pretty much just the same as road sand or how do you?
No, most of it goes for, uh, just Charlie plant bar for us for years. They, to save on loom, you put that down, that's what we do in our pits. We put it down before the loom, and it makes the water not go through. A lot of people use it for lawns.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, like, if you're in a gravel place, instead of putting on loom, and all that absorbs right into the soil, you put that clay down underneath it, you save on loom, and it's better for the, you know, for the environment.
And you're saying that you might be selling that stuff?
Sell all of it, that's all.
You're gonna sell it, you're not gonna use it on-site?
Well, if we got, you know, places, there's not that many places where we're gonna have to plant grass because it's so little acreage there out of the 500. That's been, you know, a lot of people didn't realize that. There's over 500 acres there, and over 100 years, we're only gonna pack eight.
Yeah.
And that front escrow, we might be on three acres for 100 years. It's so big. So we're not gonna have a real lot of loom to replace through the years in that pit.
Do you have an estimate on how many yards you'll be taking out of there?
You know, the most we've ever taken out of Sanford, ever, it was this year's 100,000 yards. We're getting ready to go to another recession, and whatever we're all gonna find when we do, they say dirt cheap, and dirt's gonna get real cheap again, and it's gonna be more difficult. For instance, the toothpaste way down the road here, even for Sanford 15 years, nobody wanted to buy. All of a sudden, somebody did because of what the economy were in. It's not gonna last, and we own, this is only one of the pits, so we take material level, because we're, our business is also changing. We're going towards golf scene and moss scene. We don't sell as much of that. And so I, I don't foresee over the next 10 years, a big impact. And I, you don't know, if this won't last for 10 more years, we'd be busier, but I don't know anybody that thinks it's got a lot, lot of legs left.
About a year.
Yeah, that's what I think at the most. And when it changes, I feel bad for a lot of people that aren't ready for it, and we've been trying to get ready. So that is the best answer I can give.
Right, could you, could you supply us with those numbers for the, the estimate for how many yards out of the, I guess per, there's three areas, so maybe, in each area, how many yards are you taking out total?
Mm-hmm. And the other thing about, to answer your question too, the biggest aggregate holder in the world is right down in Wells Pike Industries. They have two big quarries. They have hundreds of millions of yards of rock, and they're all over the world. They make so much rock, when times go bad, like the last time, we would sell them sand and get it down to them, and they would sell us rock cheaper than we could get it ourselves, because again, dirt got cheap. So we went six or seven years not using any of our rock. I see that happening again when we kind of team up. They said, well, geez, you help us, we'll pay for all the trucking. And in bad times, that's what happens, like, yuck, pisses. And that's one change we're all gonna see on this age row, because we are at the end of the biggest boom in my lifetime, and I saw it in my dad's pit, you know, like, it's too far to come up here with the price of fuel and everything. But we're also gonna think 10 years down the road again, it's gonna get busy. It's a cycle, but we're, we're at the end of a, you know, a time that.
Thank goodness.
That a lot of the people in this row are gonna have a tough time, you know, selling their product.
Yeah.
It's what it is, it's, you know, but I'll get you the numbers of the most. And we wanna do it differently, but we gotta talk into some of the selectmen and the other people about this. We wanna get it so that we only take so much a year, but at different times, we wanna take more. We wanna work with the town as we talk more about, about, and the other pits I've been mentioning, we should all shut down the week before. That's when there's more traffic for people coming. We can get enough of our stuff out. We should, we shut down a longer time on Labor Day before and after. Why not? There's more traffic and cars there. People, we normally, on our holidays, our whole business, we try to shut down before New Year's or Friday, because it's not safe on the road, because the people are coming up here so fast to get to their places. They drive like crazy. It's not us.
Well, and they line up for the dump too on a holiday weekend.
That's right.
All down the road.
And we, we're very flexible about that, because it's not like, oh my God, if we don't go up there one day, if we don't have to go up there for a week, it doesn't, it's not the end of the world. We, in our other pit that my dad had, they went there in the winter and stopped out for a lot of the summer. for a lot of the summer, so then they only came in when they were in between jobs, just to keep the guys busy. That's what we foresee. We're going to come up here on off seasons when there's no traffic, haul most of it out during the busy times, we don't want to be up here without the car for one down this road. And that's something we want to work out with you guys, like, okay, we want this many trucks a day, but we're going to take these two weeks off, we can make up for it when there's no traffic up here. And it's just, you know, it's going to come down all this, we want to do it different. We want to get the other pits and we've been talking with them and all work together because we all need each other and I think we're all going to work good together once we, once we get going and it's going to be good, you know? I'm quite optimistic about working with all you guys and I didn't want to say that, you know, and as I said at the beginning, four year and a half ago I was in here and they were telling me, we can't find, we're in the plan of it, forget going for that, we might not have a plan of it, but I want to thank you guys for being on it. I know it takes a lot of work, there's a lot of good times, there's a lot of shit you guys get and I appreciate all you guys doing the job, I really do. I couldn't do it, I wouldn't last a week. And I know you guys are all doing the best you can, I mean that, and it's what it is and, you know, we're here to, we're here to be part of the solution, that's what we really want to be. We did that with Mr. Cashman, we knew was a long time, plan board member, when we came back to town, he put in the paper, it's a breath of fresh air, we've got happens come back, they're going to work with us. And that's what we want to do. Any questions you guys have, anytime call, any ideas you have, we've got ideas too, to make this smoother for everybody. The other point that I really want to make is all the people that come from out of state, a lot of them don't like businesses, we like the out of state that's coming, that's where we make our money. We want to be nice and without them, I'm not selling ground, the houses aren't being built, so we want to work together with people coming too. They, they call me and say, you know, they've done it in our other pit, we got a big potty this week, how about, you know, stay in the garden today, we don't want to hear anything. What we doing? It's, we've got to work together. Okay, any other questions?
Just wondering about the forty acres open, how you came up with that number? Could you operate with less or how did you come up with that?
That was just what there was there, we could absolutely move less.
I think that was one of the changes on the paperwork.
During the presentation, they mentioned thirty acres, I think, is what it would, one of the changes they were going to make. It's still a good question on thirty acres, but I don't think it's forty anymore.
Oh, okay.
And the same with the trucks, you had put a hundred in the report.
We're going to change, we're going to figure that out. We haven't calculated the real number and we want to kind of talk in the plan board about that, where we vary it, like let's knock out the Fourth of July, let's knock out any other holidays we can think of when there's more cars on the road than we don't go and let's add a couple on a day with a Wednesday, it's only around. And there's ways we can be, all be a little more flexible like that. And as far as the forty acres, we don't need that, especially in the front, we probably need two. The only reason we, we need to make one good swath in the back might be the narrow one because we're sure anything, if we, if we just ever dig in one place, we're not going to meet the test. And then if we start making moss sand, well, we got to go find the finest sand in that whole path and save all of that, but we don't need all forty acres, we just need one swath. And the new rules too of the pits that people want to wear of, we, you don't have to worry about the plan board, they watch us from the sky and in all our pits, if they see us going an acre over, they call us and you're going to reclaim an acre right now, by Friday and we're going to shut you down.
States or towns?
We got from the DEP. They watch on camera now. And they're, they're great to work with, they're very knowledgeable and they come around pit every year or if there's a complaint, they can come in or knowing if there's a complaint, they'll call the town and the town can answer the complaint. And so, and we're all, the other thing I heard is you don't bond anymore, there's another way that, I found that out, there's another way that we put the money out that people don't understand, if, if we go bankrupt, you guys have the money already in the account to fix anything that, that we would leave behind, which is good, I'm all for that. It's not like the old days where you drive around these back roads and there's pits that are open, those days are done. You remember the pit now, you're either reclaiming it when you're supposed to or you're shutting down in their replacement and which we want to do anyway. It's, you know, I've got children and grandkids coming up here like, like my dad did, he did it all that way, we'll do the same way for the next generations. But yeah, any other questions like that, please, you can find another call because there's going to be a lot of things like that, they're going to come up right through this.
I've got a couple of things, they're not real questions. One is just a statement, kind of in line with what you just said, which is, I think we've all just been through a really difficult process. I have been focused today personally on the benefits from that process, that I think one of the big benefits in my view is that we've heard from a lot of people with a lot of different positions and concerns, both ways. And so, at least I feel as a planning board member, I know a lot more now about the concerns that people not involved in the industry have. I've heard a lot of concerns that people in the industry have. And so, and that can only serve to benefit, I think, all of us. And I think, you know, what I look forward to doing is for the stakeholders to be together, trying to work creatively, like you were saying, trying to negotiate more for interests rather than positions that seem to polarize. And so I, you know, I look forward to moving forward. In my view, the presentation that you all made, was it just last week, was by far the most informative and best one that I've seen, not that I've been here a long time, but it was really helpful. So I want to say those things. The other thing, just big picture, and again, I'm still waiting for an opinion from the Municipal Association, but my read on the ordinance right now would suggest to me that this washing pond or will have to be fenced because any, okay, any.
Oh yeah, it's no problem.
Okay, but I'm just saying, and you can research it and maybe you disagree. I think that will have to be, the other thing that surprised me, but again, my read is that any building that you put up, we will have to have an escrow for its demolition once you stop operating. And I will read that more carefully, but it makes sense to me that you would not want an abandoned pit with abandoned buildings because of safety issues.
Can we go with a different permit then, so we just get a building for?
It's, I think it says any permit, any temporary structure or regular structure. I can look at it more closely and, you know, and again, I might be wrong about whether that applies, but I'm just saying that I think it does.
If it does, we'll just change it for residents or whatever, permanent building, if we can, let's deal as we get to it.
Okay, yeah.
You have enough road for us, you can go for a permit for.
Yeah, I just wanted to put out those two concerns so you didn't feel blindsided later. So you can research, we can research.
Right, good.
Yeah, okay.
We'll figure that out.
And not trying to make it difficult, but what I am trying to do in the interest of the people that have spoken and people that express concern about us not using the tools we already have, is I personally have a much better grasp now of the tools and the criteria and all that. And I do plan to apply them because that was one of the criticisms from people that feel that we haven't, we haven't applied what we should have, the people that feel they've been affected adversely. So I see it as working together, like I said, I don't want to blindside you later and I could be wrong, but I, I believe those two things apply and I just wanted to give you the heads up in case they do.
Yeah, I think everything you said, I agree with it and I'm looking forward to it honestly and I don't want to keep having the same table, when people go up there and see what we're doing, we're not doing it because we want to battle for it, we're doing it because it's right. Being up here all my whole life with our families and the people that, this lost mom is, man, you're doing this for hundreds of years, don't mean all this, it's the right thing to do. It's great, all the kids play up here, it's a real big playground and the winter time the lake becomes like a big field and everybody's crossing these trails and going everywhere. And in the summertime, the four by fours, that's how I pick my apples, I go down these trails from my camp, we all do. And to lose that, this town will lose a lot and it's great, it's, it's just an awesome thing for all of us and we can work through all the other things. And everybody, you know, one thing I found a lot is a lot of people that call and think you're going fast, it looks like you are, that's why I like it when they call, no, no, here's how fast we're going, that's, that's something we can address through this, for the, I'm talking, you know, guys, we're not going to get this, that truck.
It is true that visually, sound wise in particular, it sounds like a big truck is going faster than it actually is. That's absolutely true.
Yeah, it isn't, but, but it's, you know, it's also something that I learned more myself on all this, out there in town, not just for work, some of the people there, you know, the electricians, the plumbers, the carpenters, the masons, you know, I'm talking to them, I go, man, you know, this goes gravel goes up, well, then I might look at my foundation, I won't be able to compete, I won't be able to get this. And I really got a feel of myself, I learned a lot through all this too, but it was that, I'm not a politician, I didn't know what the difference of the Warren Committee is to the planning board. And I don't, we still don't know why the Warren Committee votes when it doesn't matter what they vote, they don't have a vote, it doesn't mean anything, whatever it is.
Yeah, it's a recommendation that.
It is, but we're here to work with everybody and, and I can't wait till everybody sees the project and, you know, we're going to do the best we can and we're going to be flexible too with everybody, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you both.
Bernie, are you referring to page fifty-three, number seven in the performance standards?
Well, actually.
Just so I have it in my head.
Yeah, my real, let me look. Yes, number D two as to standing water.
And then number seven, no equipment debris, junk or other material?
No, no.
That's what I thought the building issue was.
Right, that's what I, it could be, it's just in the second half of the paragraph.
Which number, what number again? Because I don't. Number seven.
D seven.
Yes, I'm sorry, you're right, yeah.
And that was something that I actually came, came to that when we were dealing with Paul Belly Plants wanting to put up the barn on his place to store his equipment.
Yeah.
And I looked at this.
Yeah.
And it is something that we might want to discuss. I don't know if it's just a slip of verbiage where it says any temporary shelters or building, whereas it could be just referring to a temporary building.
Kind of like a, like a better term to lean to, three sided.
Yeah, like one of those shelter lodges you put your tractor in it.
Like a pole barn type, right?
Yeah, well, it's.
The verbiage in this number seven is not as clear as it could be.
Right, does the modify a temporary apply to building?
That, that's what I, and, and actually at the time I asked Pat and she said she thought it did, so I didn't really bring it up for Belly Plants, but.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, at least I know what you're referring to.
That is what I'm referring to.
Yeah, yeah, because that is something that.
And.
It's a, I mean, it makes sense that you would have to get rid of any odds and ends, but.
Right.
If you have a storage building, is that really?
Well.
And then it's something we need to discuss, I don't need to do it now.
Yeah. It's, you know, it's saying, it's referring to what happens after you've stopped active extraction operations.
Right.
And I do see, like I said when Mr. Peppin was here, I do see a consideration for that. Do you want a pit, a former pit, sitting there with a vacant building that people could get hurt in? So I, I mean, yes, it would be, obviously it's, well, really, why, in terms of the public interest aspect of that, why would the public interest differ between a temporary building or a permanent one? It's, it can't be because it's an eyesore, because this stuff isn't supposed to be visible anyway.
But Belly Plants is.
Right. But.
You remember the case?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, and not that we should necessarily go in depth about his case, it's just that it's a, it's a similar.
Yeah, it is.
Similar thing.
It is, yeah, although I, I would, I wasn't aware of that at the time we dealt with Mr. Plant and I would at least visually distinguish it in that if he ended his operations and someone else bought that property, the location of that building would make it usable for something else versus sitting out, you know, you drive in two acres and it's out in the middle of a pit where it's more likely that, you know, kids could get in there, someone could get hurt. His is so close to the road, you would, there's always going to be a visual.
Well, the.
But I anticipate putting theirs close to the entrance too.
Well, we'll see, but.
But that's, I.
You know, I just, yeah, like I said, he needs to show us the, the dimensions, the location and then we'll know.
It is on here.
And, yeah.
But the dimensions on that, a different.
Right, there's three different dimensions going, yeah, ten, fifty by a hundred, forty by sixty and something else.
Right, yeah, yeah. I mean, again, as.
True, yeah.
My reading more closely, technically speaking, I think there's a faux pas with our approval of Mr. Plants because I think the building is supposed to be facing the road versus his, it's facing like basically his driveway road. I don't have a problem with that, but, you know, the letter of the law versus the spirit of the law, I think we made a mistake. But not one that's going to get undone.
Yeah, I, I would argue that we have the authority to make.
A mistake?
No, to waive, I mean, we discussed the way that building was going to sit and the runoff and we approved it. Now, can you call that a waiver and maybe we should have more overtly said, we're allowing this?
Well.
Because that happens, those things happen.
And in terms of, in terms of the shall be removed too, within thirty days. I mean, that's.
Yeah, we didn't address.
I'd like this verbiage to be clean, cleaner than, than what it is because I've gotten different interpret, you know, you could interpret it two different ways.
Yeah. Looking, looking forward though, looking ahead, it may seem unnecessary or unreasonable to us in the moment, but I also wouldn't want thirty years from now for the town to be looking at a situation where there is this old abandoned building in the middle of a pit, there's nothing escrowed for it and it's got to be dealt with for some unforeseen reason. What if it burns down?
Kind of like the.
And you've got broken windows, glass, nails, all of that, that again, somebody could get hurt versus, yep, when you stop using that, you have to clean up the site, you have to get rid of it, then it's gone and that can't happen. Now, I mean, we're not responsible for his liability on his land, what if someone gets hurt or whatever, but I just think, again, as we may think this is unreasonable or whatever, but I think we ought to, it's in there and we ought to chew on it and really think it through.
I think it's reasonable, I just don't know, it's, it's in the actual verbiage of whether or not any temporary shelters or building and whether or not they're talking, and I know you said you don't see the difference between a temporary building and a building, but.
Yeah, as far as the.
So I guess that doesn't.
The public interest in it being removed.
Right.
I don't, but, yeah.
That's an interesting.
Be continued, I guess.
Yeah, well, at least I know what you were referring to.
But again, I just want, yeah, I just wanted to not blindside later was my.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
May I move on?
I think so, I mean, there's definitely some other, other things that, things like that that the board needs to discuss before we, you know, it'd be nice if we could actually discuss some of this stuff ahead of time without the applicant, even though it's not necessarily encouraged, because some of it the board just needs to become.
Clear room.
Yeah, it's like we cohesive of our interpretation of the ordinance before we start a conversation with the applicant with half us thinking it means one thing and half us thinking it means another thing, which sometimes is unavoidable, but sometimes, like we just did, it's nice to have that kind of addressed before we're in the back and forth negotiation.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
We'll move on to new business, uh, John, is it Wade? Yeah, uh, greatest practical extent, one twenty-seven Stonewall Drive, lot one twenty-eight dash zero zero three, and this is represented by Lakeview Consultants. Uh, you can come up if, if you don't mind, just kinda lean or whatever.
Well, we gotta get the, get the podium set up, huh?
Uh, yeah.
Well, we should, we wanna make sure. Well, it's kinda, I mean, we can't be operating without.
Podium.
You know, no, I mean, without a half of the land use office every time too.
Right, right.
We can only do this so long.
Right.
So, yeah, just a quick presentation on what.
Yeah, um, looking to just tear down the existing camp, um, have a survey, which I hope you guys have in front of you. It's not.
You have a bigger one there?
I do, in case you needed it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to, hard to read the notes on this one.
What else I think it is?
Um.
Our town, not known.
Yeah, um, non-conforming both ways, it can't really go in any direction, it's pretty cut and dry in my opinion. Um, but you guys want to just look at these right now, you're saying, or is that one good enough or what?
Well, this one's just kinda small.
Right, done, like.
Like just, I mean, I read through the notes, but like John was saying.
I couldn't read them.
Yeah, yeah. We didn't bring our magn.
Not good eyes.
I forgot my magnifying glass.
I only got two of them, but.
All right.
Yeah. So is this, what's shown here, existing or proposed?
Existing.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm a little over thirty feet is my closest point to the high water from the deck and my closest point to center of road is twenty-three point seven.
Yeah, right. And so it looks like your lot coverage is one of the items addressed here in your packet.
Yeah, that's what I need, I guess, to pass it in, so, adjust every time, I think, but, yeah, it's over twenty, is what you're saying.
Right.
Yep.
And it's, um, it doesn't look like you've really substantially reduced the coverage. You have the existing thirty-seven percent and proposed thirty-six point nine eight seven percent.
Yeah, no, let's just, let's just run the numbers, there's no proposed, cause I'm not.
Oh, there's no proposed yet?
Yeah, there's no, until I get my footprint, I'm not gonna spend money designing something and whatnot, so.
Well, we kinda need to know.
I'm gonna keep, those are my setbacks, that's what I'd like to keep.
You just wanna stay in the exact same spot with the exact same lot coverage?
No, I mean, that's, it's like, there's a lot of concrete there, um, that doesn't need to be there. Probably need to come down a little bit in that, but.
Would you have, do you have a reasonable proposal or?
Um, I can have one, are we gonna come up with a something right now or you guys need to do a walkthrough, sight walk?
Well, I mean, like you said, it can't really move.
I agree, I just thought they did a sight walk every time, so.
No, we don't need to do a sight walk just because, I mean, there's.
It's cut and dry, I know what you mean, yeah.
We're gonna be all out there and there's just gonna be a ice and snow and the, the building can't really go anywhere.
Yep.
I'm not sure it's necessary to do a sight walk, but I would like to see if we could do something about the lot coverage. And, and then we could, you know, take that number and and I'd, I'd put that right into my, uh, conditions of my motion tonight.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm willing to, to make that better, I don't think I should have to go all the way down to twenty percent.
I think that would be pretty hard to do.
Yeah, exactly.
But there is this whole concrete pad in the front of the.
Yeah.
Building that could be, I mean, that could even be pavers or or some sort of impervious patio.
Right, I still, they still force me to count that as lot coverage though.
Right, well, what I'm saying is in your proposal.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You could, you could propose replacing that with a.
Oh, and I would do that.
Something impervious.
Yep.
And that would really.
That would help a lot.
Well, I.
No, I agree with you.
And it looks like the, um, oh, it says patio blocks for your walkway down to the.
Yeah, those are literally just stepping stones and kinda. What were you thinking on the lot coverage, I mean?
I don't know, I mean, we'd have to, you know, you know the site better than I do.
Yeah.
And we, we'd just have to come up with something that seemed, uh, reasonable.
If the, if the pad could be made impervious, do you know the dimensions of that? We could do a little quick math.
It must be in this.
I wanna say it's like thirty by sixteen, that big one down there. Give or take, it's in that range. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm all for making that front patio, um, yeah, impervious patio and all that.
Cause that, that would bias, need a calculator, but that would.
Right. You think the owner would be happy with that or?
Um, I, I couldn't make him live with it, yep. I mean, call it lakeside patio is, you know, has to be a pervious surface.
Do you know offhand how old the structure is?
Well, before eighty-nine, but I don't know how old.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four for what?
You said well before eighty-nine.
Yeah, eighty-nine's where that's when the thirty percent regulations are coming in.
Right, right.
Okay, so it would have been conforming after the slowdown or, you mean, is it a really old building that went on?
No, I'm just saying, when I, if anything was there before January of eighty-nine, it's technically grandfather, everything after that, if it's not permitted, I have to count it towards my thirty percent and all that, that's what I, when I sit down with the code officer, we go through the file, have the existing plan, have what was there in eighty-nine and figure out what can and can't be used.
You, you were able to do that with Jason or?
No, I said before I do the actual design stuff and this and that, we go through all those.
Oh, all right, so maybe we don't have everything we need tonight because some of these, I don't know, it's hard to, you know, we have to determine that the structure hasn't been added onto since nineteen eighty-nine and we don't actually have the information to determine that.
Yeah.
Until the code, you know, until that process with the code officer comes about, so to speak.
Uh, I'm not, yeah.
Can that be, just this, this process sometimes takes a while, can that be added to the application process so we can maybe fast track stuff like this? Cause I've never had to do that before, you know what I mean, so to do it.
Well, I'm sure when you submitted an, uh, application like this to the previous code officer, he would thoroughly check to make sure that your elevated deck or something wasn't added on.
If it'd be a building permit, yes, but not for this. Every single time with Ken, we don't sit down and do it till after this.
Right, but when you're going to calculate your thirty percent, which you're not, you haven't even done, right? You did your, because you, you're not really gonna make it any bigger or you're, how are you gonna use your thirty percent?
However, I can use it on, I mean, that's not.
You're just gonna make the structure basically taller or?
Yeah, or, I mean, I can, I mean, it's an L shape, I could fill it in, as long as I be, remain conforming to what we agree on and I stay within the thirty percent expansion limits, I guess I can.
Yeah, I guess there is some area within the L that you could expand, is that what you're saying?
Right, yeah, that, or I could get a loft, I mean, as long as I stay within the height restrictions and everything else, so just.
We also don't have any pictures of it.
I know, I was trying to Google, um, just to get a picture of it. Just taking out that patio roughly, given thirty by sixteen brings it from thirty-seven to a little over thirty-two.
Hmm, yeah, I mean, that's a decrease, you know, substantial decrease.
And I would, I would honestly, right now, settle for thirty-two, dropping five off there and and I think that's fair and helps the lake and everything else.
Would you expect all that pavement and concrete to be taken out during your rebuilding process or are they gonna?
Hundred percent, that's all coming out, yeah.
Everything?
Yeah, they're made.
Including like the pavement of the driveway?
Driveway, there will be a paved driveway at some point there.
Yeah, right.
The concrete up by the road is.
I'm guessing it'll be pavement, but I mean, that'll all come out when.
Well, what is that concrete pad by the?
House floor.
It's a walkway to the entry door. I have some pictures on my phone, do you wanna see them or?
I'm just trying to figure out if we really should have a review with Jason before we vote on this thing.
Uh, I kinda meant to, to be, you know, I kinda, when I talked to Jason about it, I said, usually we have it up on the screen, you know, you've been through.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yep.
I said, you know, that was one of my quirks, I guess, but tonight with him being out and Ashley being out, we don't have that capability.
Yeah.
And it does, it does help, you know?
No, I agree, that's why he just called me late and I was like, yeah, if I can get on, everything's fine, and he's like, yeah, no, it'll work, and that, I just.
Cause I know.
I'm not saying I'm the busiest man in the world, but I have quite a bit going on and I just, I hate wasting my time at the end of the day, you know?
No, no, I just.
Don't wanna waste your time.
We just don't wanna jump the gun either, you know, I don't wanna.
No, and I, I agree with you.
Is it a single story structure right now or?
It's a walkout basement and a story, cause it's, it's on a hill, so you, you know, once.
Right, right.
Because we also threw out, if it was snowing, you were fine if we passed it on to the next meeting. Yesterday when Jason talked to you, I know that too.
Yeah, I was gonna rock and get on the matter and he said, I'll let you know, that's.
Yeah, it was quirky with the, yeah, it was quirky with the weather. So, and, you know, like I said, them being out doesn't help. Is this part of the old Pat Hanon realm?
His middle one.
What were the dimensions you gave for that concrete?
Um, thirty by sixteen.
This is concrete by water thirty by twenty-eight.
Oh.
Right here on this, um, list of, cause then we've got concrete at entrance six by eighteen, concrete hundred deck.
There you go.
Yeah. So it's, um, concrete by waters thirty by twenty-eight.
Okay, oh, yeah, eight forty, so that'd drop it even more.
That would change our.
It would drop it even more.
Start at thirty-two, if we can do better.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, it's unfamiliar with it.
Just so you, that's from like the lakeside kind of the view.
Oh, yeah.
And then, you see that enough and then.
Hmm, yeah, it's kinda.
So.
It's a.
It drops it twenty-eight point nine.
Before he did, that's a weird.
Okay, so.
It's down the driveway view. Uh, I don't know if I'm on the right way, no. It's kinda the view from the lake.
Okay.
Hard to tell, I mean, it's now obviously hard to tell, but, so that patio is all.
Do you wanna see the?
Yeah.
Kind of at that level right there.
No, because my head's.
Well, if you use the, that calculation instead of the thirty by sixteen, it drops it down to twenty-eight point nine, twenty-nine. Which is even better, something.
Here's my question and the cause of my confusion when you're mentioning nineteen eighty-nine.
What page you on?
Uh, well, I'm on page five of one oh eight at the top and, and item A, the language in that tracks with what I was looking at on non-conforming structures on page three, but you don't have to look at page three, that, that references back to nineteen seventy-four.
Hmm.
So my question is, um, is anything being, does anything being proposed, any expansion, make this increase the non-conformity with setbacks and dimensions and so forth? Not the thirty percent measurement, but does it make it non-conforming in any respect?
Does it make it more non-conforming?
Right.
No, I can't make it more non-con.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
I cannot do that or I just can't.
Correct, and that's what I wanted to make sure we were on the same page as these, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Not possible. Well, possible, but well, they would not.
Not allowed, not permitted, okay, that's.
Right, anything is possible, but not.
Yes, and some things that aren't permitted happen too, but.
Where, do you know where the septic is?
It's gonna have, uh, it's gonna have to have a new septic. Right now, the, cause I've helped him dig it up, the tank is here.
Okay.
Um, and it's pretty darn old, I don't know if it's in the road, no, it's not here, I don't think. I think it's either in the right of way or he owns a land across.
Yeah, it's a couple, it's a little parking spot there.
So.
Oh, he owns the, the property across the street?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, it's like.
Okay, well, where's the, uh?
It's like a parking lot now, it's kinda like a hollowed out swath.
Right, but we don't have a visual for the size of the lot across the street.
Well, no, what if we need that?
Well, cause if he owns across the street.
Well, or not moving across the street, come on.
Well, if he, how far?
Oh, you can't do that.
Well, you absolutely can, um.
Oh, come on.
What are you talking about moving across the street?
Well, if he owns the property on the other side of the street.
Separate, separate.
And we're looking to get him behind the hundred foot line is the goal of this process. If he's behind the hundred, he's, he can do whatever he wants.
Yeah.
I mean, as long as he adheres to the other setbacks.
No, I just didn't know if you were talking about having the septic across the street, that's what I was trying to get at.
Well, I mean, I'd like to see what, what the whole area looked like.
It's a separate lot.
Well, that's fine, but, I mean, if he could accommodate the house with a still, with a, he could still see the lake and everything, then that's a, it wouldn't be the first time.
Moving this across the street?
Well, you're, you're, you're planning on demo and rebuild, so it's not like you have to move it.
I love it, I don't, I was only down there a couple times, I have a picture of it.
Well, I'm just, I don't see the, see the lot lines for across the street, so it's hard to know what the lot looks like.
Right, it's good I didn't survey it, cause I didn't think that was even a possibility.
Yeah, so do we know for a fact that this has not been expanded by thirty percent or more since nineteen eighty-nine?
Yeah.
You know that it hasn't?
I do not know.
Oh, no.
Right, that's what, that's what we, I don't think we can decide on this tonight.
We can't.
Cause of that, for is the biggest reason.
Correct.
And that you should really go through it with Jason or, or someone should look in the land use records.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, with any permits or.
But we can put down his notes that we, we've talked about, um, changing the concrete in the front to impervious and that would drop his lot coverage significantly and yeah, I mean, we can, we'll look at it again, I guess. I mean, I'd like to see, with these presentations, I'd like to see some sort of basic pictures of the building. Usually we can just get them on Google Earth and then, any, you know, like the lot versus street, I mean, worth seeing it. And the deed, a lot of times we get the deed too, cause a lot of these, it's actually one lot. If you look in the deed, it's probably as one lot. You know?
Yeah. I don't personally, I mean, you have to get some answers to these preliminary questions, but I. If the proposal is to tear down and rebuild. Um, and not increase more than thirty percent, and it hasn't been done since nineteen eighty-nine. I don't see why he should be required to build across the street.
Right.
Anymore than if he didn't own that lot. I just don't see that.
Just depends if it's the same lot or not.
Still doesn't, to me, it doesn't really.
Well, and how far is the road from the lake?
Can't be more, geez.
I don't know, I can. Never.
Looks like, uh.
I don't.
Looks like the road's about a hundred feet from the lake.
Yeah.
So, moving forward, from now on. You want me to sit down with the code officer, so we can. So can we add that, is that something you guys handle, is that the code officer that'll handle that as far as what the application process is?
The code officer.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't really, we don't do that much, but we have to make sure that the. The application is actually ready to come to us before we can make the sighting determination.
I just haven't done that before, so that's why, and I've been in here a few, I think, billion times, so I was just curious.
On the code enforcement officer. And, yeah, I mean, if you didn't make a note, one of the questions you might wanna ask of him is. Is there any record that the building's been expanded since nineteen eighty-nine and by how much?
Yeah, that'll, that's all part of what I'll have to sit down with.
Yeah.
What else do you guys need?
Um, you could come up with that impervious surface. Uh, number.
Exact number, yeah.
That, that you're happy with, I mean, it looks like we're.
Yeah, with the, with the other number, it comes down to twenty-nine percent. With the bigger footprint that you've noted. Uh, Jen made the copy of it.
Oh, she did, okay.
Um, do you wanna see the back lot? Can you get us a measurement of the back lot?
I can off the town map, so I'm not gonna get the survey of it.
Right.
No, you don't have to survey, I mean.
Just get, get a ma- measurement.
That's right off the town website.
Or a copy of the deed, I mean, that's.
Yeah, deed, copy of deed.
Yeah, I'll get the plot line of it.
But I think that would be all we need.
Yeah, cause it, I mean, then by that, be on the next meeting, probably, right, we could get him.
I would think so, it kinda depends on Jason.
Yeah, and by that way, if Jason's back, we can have him put the pictures up and stuff, so it's helpful, you know?
Yeah.
I think it's more, you know, not missteps, but a more learning curve for Jason as well. Where you have.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree with that.
So I, I did, I don't think, I think it's warrant here, but at least we're getting you in the right direction.
Nope, no, I agree.
Is that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, it looks pretty straightforward, we just have to make sure that we. You know, I mean, there's little things like the wooden deck is only five feet from the neighbor property line, we could ask that he.
I'm already, yeah, I'm house ten, ten, not gonna.
Well, all those.
I'm gonna do that, so you don't have to worry about that.
Okay, so then you would be a ten on that side, you know?
Conforming on both sides.
Right, is, uh, the drain will be coming out too. Where are you? Um. Trying to sort of maybe.
I mean, all of them, this. This is, this I'm not sure, the whole. It's basically, the house sits five feet too low, and just everything, they have like waterfalls flowing into their garage and house.
Right.
So everything needs to be raised. Um, I'm guessing with that being raised. I would say ninety-nine percent sure those are coming out, cause it's gonna be actually that height of everything you would need to retain them all. So, yeah, those are going.
How much fill do you anticipate having to bring in to, to accomplish that?
Um, there won't be. Realistically much fill, I mean, from what we're digging out and setting grades and everything, and it won't, there won't be much, I don't know the exact number, but. I exaggerated with the five feet, it's nothing like that, but it's close to the road anyway, so. But I mean, they have water pouring in their house on days like this, so it's.
Yeah.
Dangerous in, in a way. All right, so, uh. What I'm willing to make previous and have that, basically that lot coverage number, right?
Hmm, yeah.
Um. And go over with Jason in the folder, make sure what has been added, what hasn't, this and that, what the true numbers are, basically?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the deed, right? And the deed.
No.
Deed or, I saw, you said you're both, plot plan of the back lot will work.
You want a deed?
We should have a copy of the deed, I think.
So we're gonna add that onto the application too?
Yeah.
Well.
I think we should.
Are we not, before we approve anything. We're supposed to. Be sure that we're dealing with the actual owner of the property, I mean, we dealt with that earlier tonight on a different application. Where I reviewed a deed and there were two owners listed, listed, the applicant is one owner, so it, it is important.
Right.
I get what you, yep.
Yeah, it is important.
They do another town, I just don't know, going forward too.
You could, let's, you know, another scenario, you could have. Go on a house with my brother, and I come in and do all this, and he comes up and says. You tore the house down? And you did this, you know, I mean, we don't know if the owners are.
I don't even know.
Acclamations, yeah, I mean, I recognize his name, uh, but still, you know, we.
Yep, no, I, I have some points. Hey, that makes sense, so, most, actually, other towns do, I just wanna know, I want Jason to update the application.
That, yeah, and that just reminded me what I start, what I was going to say is. It may save you time or visits in, if you complete the application with Jason. Ask him to run it by us before you come in, in case we do say, well, this is missing or that's missing, so you haven't. Come in that other time, I don't know what your.
That's why I want him to put that, cause I have everything that we needed on the application in. But you guys are asking for more, so I just want him to update the application, so I have everything, but I agree with you there, but.
Yeah.
I just don't know how.
That's up to you.
Yeah.
But it, it might not, you know, because. Um, you know, Jason's relatively new, and many of us are relatively new, so, uh, I just don't want you to get frustrated. You're not wasting our time, but I didn't waste your time.
The thirty percent calc's always been required.
Correct.
As long as I've been here.
Oh, yeah, hundred percent, yeah.
So that's not new.
Right, but it was always. Kind of a, I'd say, a bargaining chip in the way, if I would do existing, and maybe, you know, if it's over, what am I willing to settle for? I mean, if it's all grandfather, technically, it's all allowed. In a way. In my opinion.
Replacing what's there?
Yeah, I'm saying, say I'm at thirty-seven percent lot coverage, but it's all there, permitted, it's all legal, you know what I mean, so.
But we just need to have it verified.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
Hmm.
So, no, let's, uh, I'll get that stuff and.
And I thought we always did get a deed with.
I don't know if we, every time we get one, but some of them, they give you the deeds, some of them they.
Yeah, I remember seeing some, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we could, yeah, I mean, why not make it standard with pretty much every project?
Doesn't make sense not to.
Then we don't have to ask.
For that reason, dude, cause that's probably, you can render that more than you think, maybe.
Well, also, not so much for this use, but like, if somebody is thinking about buying a piece of property.
Yeah.
And they wanna know, can I use it for X, Y, as a conditional use? They wanna come in and talk to us, we can't do that, we can only deal with the current owner of the property.
Right.
So I think it's the same, because it's that ostensibly, let's say that these people didn't own it, if they wanna know. Hey, if I buy that, can I tear that down and rebuild, and we don't do that, so, yeah, so we need to know who owns that.
Um. So, talk to Jason, he'll tell me what I'm on next, is that how that works, probably, right?
I think you'll be in two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks.
Jason's out this week.
Yeah, as long as you can get.
I talked to him a bunch, I'm trying to get in.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would put you at, uh. Seventeenth.
Okay, I just, sometimes there's, it's not on, or it's canceled, I just didn't know, so, on next week then, which should be fine?
It'll be two weeks, two weeks, two weeks from tonight, I think.
Yeah.
We can't make a special one and do it next week?
No, we're all special.
We did enough of those.
We're young enough.
Well, that's part of it, I had this in a while ago, but.
You did.
A lot of other things going on, and.
Yeah, no, we're, yeah, we're working on ordinance, isn't, you know, we had, didn't have anything, so we're just trying to jam some ordinance work in.
Yeah, I was like, Jay's like, no, 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 I'm like, oh my lord.
Right.
All right, well, thank you guys for it, thank you.
Yeah, if, well, if we're gonna ask for a deed, we know he's representing him, but wouldn't it be nice to have a letter from the homeowner if?
There is one. The letter of authorization, India.
Make it him, but we, we do need to verify the owner.
Well, the property owner's signature is just their initials too, so.
Right.
I mean, not that I. Question it necessarily, it's just.
But like.
I think that would be a good standard practice to always get the deed.
Yeah, I guess I hadn't thought about that before, but in the past, we have gotten, yeah, maybe not on everyone, but we have gotten. I do remember getting some too.
When the, in the.
Yeah, the one in particular I remember is the little, remember the little one that burned down?
Hmm.
They had the deed for that one, cause it was a weird little. Piece of property down there on the lake.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Um, while I'm.
Everyone is so different.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I will be away. From next Wednesday, February nine, through February nineteenth. So, just so you know, you know, anyone who else might say I'm not gonna be there, you might wanna make sure, try to make sure, you know, Bev will be here or something.
Right, well, I think if it ends up the three of us, we still have enough, right, to.
Yeah.
You have enough, right?
Yeah, Pat, Pat'll be back.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
No, but thank you for that, I didn't really tell me that.
So.
And it does look like, across the street, it says it's. Map one twenty-eight lot six, and this is map one twenty-eight lot three, so I.
And it's.
I guess it is a different lot, it's just when the, when the same person owns across the street.
Yeah.
Our, our objective is to get him back behind the hundred foot line. You know, so it is something to consider sometimes, because it's, a lot of times, these, these. Thrush road is, it's just a private road and, and the, the landowner actually owns to the center line. So it's like a weird, I don't know.
Well, two. Two things, I can certainly see why he would. Wanna be on the water side.
Oh, sure.
And secondly. Um. Let's not forget, the taxes are much higher on the water side, so the town, if we push it onto the other side of the road, the town actually uses monetarily. Not that I think money governs everything over.
Yeah.
Environmental and all that, but, but. I shouldn't say this with Mr. Quah here, but my taxes are about a third what my neighbors are, because I am on the road the other side.
Hmm. Hmm, well, that's interesting.
It makes a very big difference.
Well, maybe they, we should ask the applicant, maybe they'd prefer that.
Waterfront.
You never know.
Hey, it might. There, cause I've got work there, and it's in that back lot, this house is here, and it's kinda awkward. Just different, it's kinda, it's a weird setup.
Yeah, no, I just.
In that picture, you mean?
I think we did well with that, with having confirmed Jason.
Kind of hogged out banking and stuff, it's a weird.
So, I'm seeing why I'm in here, oh, so we do have some, um.
We're gonna move on to, uh.
Yeah, I guess, I guess.
About this, you know, we're, we're at a good point, Jason.
Yeah.
Talked to her as well, because they're out that, you know, if we just reserve the spots, like we've done. That's good enough for now, and we can figure it out. When do they want a number to reserve, cause I think tonight, we even heard maybe.
By tomorrow.
The first, by tomorrow. Yeah, February fourth.
I think we can easily, like you said, we only have five things total, right?
Right.
Let's go over that right now.
Yeah.
Let's make sure.
And we should vote on them, to, so that it's voted on, that we.
Yeah, we can vote on those, however many it is.
Right, and, and what they are, that way you can get the draft and actually come back into.
Yeah.
That form.
Over, I did, I do have my notes from.
So, so we're saying we're not gonna be able to get any changes on pits. I didn't realize we had to give them a number so soon. Yeah, it's been creeping up on us and we got money.
Well, we could, we could put it right in there as one of the. We, one of our warrant articles will be. Changes to the mineral extraction ordinance. It's just, we don't have a draft.
Have it, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But we could.
Well, yeah, well, I.
I mean, it's not like we couldn't. Try to do that, I think it would be.
Yeah.
One option.
Right, yeah, just increase the number and we can always delete it.
Right.
So, we have, um.
I wouldn't mind doing that, I'd work on it.
I'd start it as well. So we have, um. Residential rentals.
Yeah.
Solar panels.
Mixed use.
Mixed use, hopefully. Um, tiny houses. And, oh yeah, mixed use was what I was thinking of.
Changes to definitions.
And some definitions, and, um.
Are we referring to that one that we? That we can't talk about and change?
I still think we can reserve a spot for it.
Yeah, uh, right now, we're standing at four, I mean, how many do you wanna reserve on the back end? Do you wanna try to squeeze something on the mineral extraction?
I would put it down for now.
Yeah.
And we can always.
It's easier to go back, because they're not gonna be able to add if.
Right.
You know, once we get beyond this.
Should we just say, change it to the performance standards, or what part of the ordinance were you looking at specifically, if you?
What I would like to do ideally, but I don't know if it's overly ambitious, and it may be. Especially in view of trying to have meetings with stakeholders and so forth in advance, but. I would love to be able to. Take. Mineral extraction ordinance from another jurisdiction. And go through it. And consider adopting it after we've adjusted it for acting, what works, what doesn't work, what do we want? My, my point is, we, to do that, we don't, we're not starting with, from scratch, we have. What's done elsewhere, like we did with rentals, you know, what's done elsewhere, maybe have a conversation with some people in those other areas and say. Does it work the way you're doing it, you know, what's been problematic, what hasn't, meet with stakeholders, see what they think about it. But I think it's possible. To do that, potentially, and, and I think that might be preferable to doing this piecemeal. Where part of the. Dissatisfaction is that things aren't comprehensive, you know, so if we were able to meet that goal. And do the whole thing comprehensively, or.
When is the draft write-ups required? I was just trying to jog my brain on that, do you remember?
I thought not until March, but.
I think it's. Either March or April.
Yeah.
Well, I did, they only take the final draft.
Hold on, I. Well, we don't have to give them anything until the final?
Well, we have to. Well, we have to tell them what the warrant article is reserved for, and that's why I was trying to narrow it down to maybe performance standards of mineral extraction, performance standards, so that we were zoning, honing in on part of the ordinance.
Yeah.
As opposed to just saying in general, because that is...
Yeah.
Well, even...
Because I do have some things that I'd like to add into the performance standards. Um, some my, quick ideas were uh, overall maximum size of open area per pit. Um, because the DEP allows them to go up to...
Yeah.
I've seen it as big as 100 or more acres. And in the town ourselves, we could say we only wanna have, not saying they can't make their pit 100 acres, it's saying they can't have that much open at once. How much open area? See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, and some of the numbers that were coming to me was a lot like for 30 acres, because that would make the existing pits all conforming, but it would stop new pits or expansion of pits to more than 30 acres open, because that's a large area. Like we were discussing with Mr. Peppin tonight, how much land does he really need open?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that would be one thing I was thinking about adding in there, kind of a
Yeah.
threshold. Also,
Okay.
um, maybe having something in there about requiring revegetation with trees as opposed to just grass. Because as we all know, these pits, the most famous line is, "We're gonna put the grass back," but there wasn't grass there to begin with. Um, these are forested areas.
Well...
So something that I would put forward would be verbiage under the reclamation that required planting of trees, at least in some of the pit. Um, like on the side slopes or, um, and then something about wind, windborne erosion. We don't have much about windborne erosion in our existing verbiage.
I think those are, those are good, Gavin. The, um, the ordinance that you're referring to has a significance section on performance requirements, and it addresses those things.
From Hancock?
Yeah.
Yeah, I read through that.
Yeah.
But I don't want a whole standalone ordinance. I'd like
No, no.
have it folded into this document.
But I think that might be a good, uh, compromise, is we focus on their performance standards and take, see what we wanna take and incorporate in ours.
Mm-hmm.
That sort of narrows it
Yeah.
at least a little bit.
Yeah.
Do they always, because you've been here a long, so asking is kinda your forte, is do they all have to be pine trees? Can't they be maple trees and others?
No, you can put back any species that was growing there before they extracted the minerals, would be my inclination, but a lot of these sites have such poor soils afterwards and sandy soils that pine trees tend to grow better in those soils than than hardwoods, but that kind of depends on the area. Some, sometimes the pits, the bottom is actually fairly wet, and so hardwoods would do better there initially, and... No, I, I, when they did Hanson Pond, I had a list of species that I asked them to put on there and included red maples.
Okay.
Um, trees that, birches, trees that grow more readily, I wouldn't ask for.
Right. I just think, I thought...
Yeah, it was all pines and peppins.
Right, and also, not that I have anything against pines, I don't wanna be, you know, but it just seems like a cop-out a lot of times, is, yeah, we'll just put some pines or arborvitae's in, and it...
Right.
I mean, we have the pines who stayed, but it's not about the trees, I know. So I was just, I was just curious, calling, you know?
Well, and part of it came from that, um, when we went to look at another extraction site of Peppin's years ago, part of it, they planted all Christmas trees.
Yeah.
Like spruce, Colorado blue spruce, and, and then part of it, they planted red pines. And then when you looked at it 20 years later, the red pines looked like a much more natural environment. There was plants growing underneath, there was more vegetation, whereas the blue spruce were kinda just like this weird hedge that being a non-native species hadn't really turned into an ecosystem like it could've. And so we did, we did actually discuss them with that at the time, and and decided that pines were preferable over spruce. But, I mean, that was, plus people go in there and cut it down for their Christmas tree.
Well, I think that's what's happening.
But, um...
But I'm just thinking, you know, and, um, we have to look at long-term, and like, if it's kinda, it's gonna change the landscape regardless of what.
Right.
But if you add other things than pine trees, it's gonna look at the end of it, way beyond our time on this planet. It'll look more natural with other trees and
Right.
things, try to mix them in.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, instead of, you know, being a cop-out, we'll just plant pine trees, because it's easy.
I would just go for getting trees on there instead of grass myself, because if you get too nitpicky, then it's like you just...
Yeah, Hancock talks about vegetative cover, and it's, they talk about, uh, the vegeta, vegetative cover used must consist, consist of grasses, legumes, herbaceous, woody plants, shrubs, trees, or a mixture of these.
Yeah.
And so calling it out like that, and there's actually a whole page on it, that gives us I think what you're asking for, we want a mixture to include trees.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, no, I, I, I would be okay with, uh, reserving that. I think we have to commit to some, as Bernie said, I think we have to commit to some, uh, ordinance workshops to
Hmm. to work on it.
to get the draft going and get input, hopefully get some of those guys to come and, and give input.
Yeah.
I did find an old timeline from 2021. Uh, when, you know, how it goes down, it's initial request due by February 1st, 2021, but we're
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Then it went, uh, notice of potential ordinance articles on February 5th, so I'm thinking that's our list we make.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And then the final ordinance was due at the end of the month on February 26th. There's a joint be, meeting with, uh, the VOS and Warrant Finance. Appears to be a week later. And then Warrant Finance recommendation, I don't know why it takes so long, it's almost a full month.
Of March, he took March.
And then, yeah, board of selecting in Warrant Finance was March, and then the Warrant Finance final recommendations was in April.
Mm-hmm.
It appears to be the second week, and then the third week appears to be the Select and Sign warrants, and then warrants posted at the end of April.
Where is the public hearing in that process? Because we'll have to have a public hearing on.
Right.
Is it on that list?
No.
From what I recall, it needs to be at least, it's, I would say it needs to be about 30 days before the town meeting, because if you have it now...
Don't forget about it.
Yeah, it's like too early.
Right.
But if you have it with, closer to the town meeting than 30 days, it's almost like you tried to push it through too quick. So we, we usually aim for sometime in the month of May, and we have hearings on all our changes for a June town meeting.
But...
For the hearings, but that's...
Does that comply with the process, though, if we have to give them a final write-up at the end of the month? And then we have a, uh, public hearing, and we recognize based on input, there are some changes.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have time to do that?
Well, I think, and that, maybe we should be having two hearings, one in, one whenever we get a recommendation from Warrant Finance in April. Have, we, we could have one hearing in April, so that we'd have time to respond, and one in May, just as an informative, this is what's gonna be on the ballot.
Right.
We already had the hearing, sort of hearing.
Okay.
And that way, if they change...
And if changes come out in April, we'll be allowed to do that? Right? Because you said the final needs to be in Mar, early March or something?
I think this one's staying by the end of February.
By the end of February. I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have any hearings, hearings this month.
Right, but I think that's why we got caught, kind of whack about the terms, that pants down, they did some quirky changes administratively
Yeah, but that
at the end.
That wasn't from the, and I don't remember, we changed anything from the, from the public hearings. But it, it could happen, and then we just have to make sure, maybe it's a gen question, we just have to make sure we can change it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I...
I think, I think it would be a good idea to have two public hearings for the
Yeah.
Sounds like more, but...
But even with what you said, it's past the, you gotta have a final.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put it, I mean, I think they're gonna be closed tomorrow, but I can try to get that's real tomorrow and ask that question.
Okay.
That way, uh, you know, we can figure it out. I mean, it would be, it would make sense to me if, like Gavin said, we have that first initial one, even after our finals are going through, and then we can kind of use a little quirky verbiage changes or whatnot after that public hearing, then the second one, just wait and then air it all out, and it's more of an informative, and then make sure we listen to public and mean the changes they kind of do at us, or what we could do, you know? If they're mine, air it, rewrite the whole thing, we're not gonna rewrite the whole thing.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think anything of significance came up from the public hearing that caused us to change anything on the others. But I think we have to recognize the possibility that it could happen.
Yeah, because we also had a, it was a Zoom public hearing we did last year.
Yeah, it was in March.
Yeah, it was.
It was in there in March or beginning of April, because that's when, uh, I just came back.
And Mike DeMers was
Right.
sitting in as CEO.
Yeah, Dennis was up here, he couldn't get the speaker to run the...
Right, so, but I do feel like the, the Zoom platform just it, you, you don't get as much public comment.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kinda harder to control, too.
Okay, so do we wanna settle then on, uh...
Do you wanna, do you wanna leave, right, right now, we're standing at five. Do you wanna leave one open, a six one open, possibly two more open?
Well, we have to designate what they're for.
Yeah.
Uh, well, six would be
Definitions, right?
Possible, yeah.
I, okay, for the, for the one we, that shall not be named, but these other ones, like tiny houses, residential rentals, solar farms, mixed use, they all involve definitions.
Right, yeah, yeah, I mean, we can scrap the, I mean, we can decide tonight to to, basically, we are deciding tonight if we're gonna put the changed definition of a structure forward.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can't do that one at all.
We discussed that yesterday when you weren't here, but there's apparently still the potential for an appeal on some litigation on that, so we cannot touch it.
On the more to, well, again...
Well, you get a tone tomorrow.
No, that's, that's what I'm trying, saying it.
I think we just have to leave it out.
All right, okay, yeah, let's just mix it then.
Yeah.
Uh, but we wanna reserve for the pits, right?
Yeah, and then I would, you know...
I mean, I, and we can, I can kinda give her the names of what we're, our warrants will be, or...
Oh, we'll have to, yeah, yeah, they'll want that, they don't, we can just...
Rentals.
So it looks like five of them.
Residential rentals.
Residential rentals, solar panels, mixed use.
Tiny houses.
Tiny houses.
And mineral extract. Performance standards?
Yeah.
Do we need to get that specific, or just say mineral extract?
Performance standards, I'd say.
Okay.
Okay.
But there are some other, but we're probably not gonna get in, there's some other, um, you know, changes that would, that we could do, like the land use chart or whatever, but I think that just zoning in on the, honing in on the performance standards is good enough.
So as to the others we discussed...
Oh, and I think we should add the mixed-use buildings, throw the word buildings on there.
Oh, and the mixed use?
I think so.
So like, is it sufficient to say tiny houses, or do we then have to say, um, the land use chart, because there are changes related to tiny houses? Are those two separate issues or not?
I don't think it's two separate issues. I think we'll just, when, when we give them the final draft, we'll, we'll have that on there.
Right, yeah, it'll look like...
Yeah. We could just say addition of tiny houses to the zoning ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And we, did we come up with where we thought we were gonna stick it in?
We did.
Yeah, I think...
Oh.
Who was at the end of?
Yeah, they, uh, 29 was, uh, taken by the support contractor for solar. Oh, no, so I'm thinking rentals.
It was in there.
29 and 30 were rentals and solar.
Right, yeah, so I don't know.
The tiny homes, we decided to put under 2.72 residential use of structures under K, that's all I have.
Oh, that's the land use chart, right?
Oh.
Let me see, I don't...
K is gonna be residential rental units, not tiny houses.
Well, let's push, let's push tiny houses down, then.
L?
I had O.
O?
2.7.3, mixed use building, O. All N's except for commercial A, commercial C, and mixed use.
Okay, yeah, we're talking about two different things now, mixed use, and some of us are talking about tiny houses.
Sorry, K, L, and O.
I'm brain dead, hang on, why are you turning my tiny house note?
Yeah, I would stick on, I would stick with where it's gonna be in the verbiage of the document, and not worry about the land use chart right now.
Okay.
Um...
I don't know.
What did you, Gavin?
I'm looking at the
Sorry.
um, table of contents right now, at the front of the ordinance.
Would it make sense for someone to take this on, to do?
Um, I think we're almost there.
I think it's pretty easily done, I just wanna...
Time-wise, but it's not that we're sure we're talking about the same thing, and...
Oh, if we look at page... And they're all... Sorry, we want... Hmm. Pretty much, um... I mean, they're gonna be under performance standards, which, which, um... And I would recommend putting them in at the end, which would be page 80. Page 80. Um, after archaeological site, we'd wanna put in, um, I think three of those. And the biggest, the biggest reason being is just so we aren't changing all the numbering and lettering of the
Yeah, that's what we did with the other two. But what do we wanna put back there? I mean, when, when I look at tiny houses, we're, including a definition that essentially makes it, um, the same as a home, um, or the same as an accessory building. And so, and saying those same requirements will apply to tiny houses through the definition. Well, no, I could take that back, there is...
We have some verbiage that's not the definition and isn't the land use chart, right? I don't have one in front of me. It's in here. But I was thinking, like, not, not to change off of tiny houses, but to rentals, I was thinking we'd put that in at the end of
Yes.
performance standards, would be like 5.2.9.
Yeah, what we had said was, um, the support contractor numbered solar at 5.29.
Okay, so...
So rather than make them go back to...
So Chris, put that down on your list, solar 5.29.
Yeah, that's in this. And 5.30 was residential rental unit.
Yeah, yes, so we've got those plugged in.
Yeah, and then 3.1 for tiny homes.
If we think we need it. But there is some, well, it's a question of whether or not, I, did you talk about tiny houses yesterday?
No.
Okay, okay, so we still, we haven't really actually had a tiny house conversation, so to speak.
Oh, no, I'm writing it.
You are?
Same plan, yeah.
We actually did, and we walked through the land chart.
Oh, I remember there was some discussion, you know, about making sure that it wasn't considered, uh, that we weren't ending up with two residences on one lot. I do remember talking about it.
Yeah, because they were wondering how they'd hook up to a stuff that...
Right, so all the requirements for, if you have a, a lot for a single-family home, the same requirements would apply to a tiny home. You can't put two homes on your lot.
Right.
You couldn't put two, we had that discussion.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, and that's new.
You have to, statewide, every jurisdiction has to allow a tiny house anywhere they would allow a single-family dwelling. And so the same criteria that would apply to a single-family dwelling applies to a tiny house, as to plumbing and all that.
So I don't know, we, we had a draft, I think Bernie, you came up with it, that defines uh, basically the state definition, 29A.
Yeah.
That piece of paper.
Right, I don't know that I.
This one, too.
Yeah, Bernie used that and I think more to come up with, it complies with the ANSI standards, does not include. Not indeed 400 square feet, exceed 400 square feet size, does not exceed any dimension allowed for the operation in a public way.
Oh, here it is, yeah.
And is a vehicle without motive power. If in fact, that, if we, and it does not include trailer, semi-trailer, dant-trailer, if that's all strictly definition. Then I think we just have to put it in the land use chart.
Right, yeah, because it's.
That was just pulled right out of the statute, what I have there, I pulled right from the statute.
So. Where is our, does one, where is our definition, is that on one of these two documents?
The, your right hand is the one I think we were working with. The one that Bernie.
Do you favor amending Article 3, the zoning ordinance to tiny home as defined?
As defined, yeah, and then. Yep, so there's the definition.
We have to put tiny homes in it, right there.
Okay.
Because it has trailer utility.
But is this all part of the definition?
It is.
So we would be putting this whole thing in our definitions?
Correct.
It's pretty, pretty long.
Including that, well, yeah, but it's, I mean, it's got to go somewhere because that's, that's the statutory language of what a tiny home is, that's not something that we crafted.
No, but we could just, couldn't we just cite Title 29A MRS, A Section 101 Subsection ADC in the. In the definition of a tiny home and then not need this verbiage?
Uh, in terms of? In our ordinance or?
Yeah, in our definitions ordinance of a tiny home.
Yeah, but I mean, like.
I think you still have to spell it out.
Well, my thing is, even limited to the town meeting discussion, you know, what's the next question going to be? Well, what is that definition?
Yeah, that's what.
Right, but if you.
Maybe it will suffice to read it there, maybe, I don't know.
I would argue we should put it in.
Does it, just add it all in a, in the definition?
And then I, then I think we got to put it in 2.72, and so we don't mess with, you know, the lettering, we could put it in as K.
Sure, yeah.
And then, you know, we'd have to go through, we, I think it would be ours, you know, we have to go through then and go through each one, certainly be a lot of ours.
Um, we were just going to mimic. Single family dwelling, right?
And accessory, because it could be an accessory.
Do they have this, is the land use chart the same?
Uh, it is, as a matter of fact.
Okay, yeah.
Except for aquifer. The accessory is N A for aquifer. Oh, no, and shoreline and little ospe, they're not authorized. Interesting. So I think we'd have to mimic.
Single family dwelling.
Yeah.
I don't know if we want it as an accessory dwelling unit, do we?
I think the state definition said it could be.
Yes, yeah.
I know we already talked about that a little bit, but.
Actually, I crossed that out in one of our discussions.
Yeah, I think we. I think we nixed that because.
Because it would be two dwellings?
Yeah, because it's not, tiny houses aren't going to be attached to the, our accessory dwelling unit verbiage, when you find it. Which took me a second to find it before. In here, because it's.
Oh, does it come after dwelling, maybe? Uh, it's dwelling unit accessory, page 23. A permitted accessory use to an owner occupied one family dwelling, so what are permitted accessory uses?
Yeah, and it's still in, but it's still back there in the. It was under, it was with multi-family, I think, 66.
Accessory use is defined upfront by use of structure.
Here it is, yeah, page 66, additional dwelling unit, E D U. Under multi-family dwelling units.
Additional. We're looking at 51411.
Yeah, and A, only one accessory dwelling located within an owner occupied single family dwelling shall be permitted, so this. The additional dwelling unit needs to be attached to the main structure.
Oh, yeah.
Sort of like an in motor car.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, I scratched that.
Well, I guess it would get scratched, yeah.
Yeah.
And then I think it makes it clearer in terms of the structure, we just mimic the single family dwelling.
Right. And maybe we can make it as a subsection. Under. 5.14.1. Kind of right after additional dwelling, I mean, that's where it would make the most sense to fit these. These basic standards in there, like does not square, does not.
Exceed.
Indeed, we got to fix that, 400 square feet in size, like that's not something that really, that's more of a dimensional requirement than definition, I mean, it could be a definition. But maybe we could squeeze that in there under, yeah, if we did 5.14.3.
Mm-hmm.
Right after multi-family dwelling units.
Yep.
And before 5.15. Because otherwise, it's like only a couple. Performance standards, long at the end of this section doesn't really make that much sense.
Well, that would be tiny house under 5.
5.14.3 it will be.
5.14.3.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then we could, we could add the, this Bernie sheet. Standards in there, there's not, I mean, there's not much, but, because I, but we still have to.
Then I.
We still needed.
Definition, then we got to go to the, to the. Pull the definition out of the act.
Which is this definition? Oh, it says for the purposes of this section, tiny home has the same meaning as Title 29A, Section 101 Subsections, EDC.
We got to pull that then to add to the definition.
Right, I don't know if we have that in front of us.
29A is the motor vehicle code, so.
We have it open, Bernie's got it.
I just know that 29A is motor vehicle, so it might have something to do with motorized or.
Well, it has to be able to go over the road, is what they were saying.
Right, is a vehicle without motive power, like it's supposed to be on a trailer, basically.
Right now, like people living, you know, like the so-called van.
I think we still need a definition.
Right.
Are you, oh, you're looking.
I'm trying to see if I can get it real quick.
Oh, I think we're making good progress, though. Yeah, because we didn't, we didn't actually.
I need to.
Sorry.
So, not to cut, you can continue this, but. Still planning on a workshop Wednesday.
Yes.
Okay, I will not be here, just so you know, and. A general point I wanted to make is. I've already said part of this to Chris in a conversation. I would like to see us. Use professional services a little more, like with what we're doing right now, for example, I drafted it, I think before it's used. Finally, it should get run by either, you know, North Star or the town's attorney, because I really think we've been taking on too much that. You know, I don't think you should have to be an attorney to be on the planning board or have technical writing skills and all that, we're laypersons, and so I would just feel better if things get run by.
Oh, yeah.
The appropriate, I don't know if that's what usually happens or not, but.
Well, when we had, when we had the old land use office, we, we would get the thing pretty much 99% and then we would run it by them.
Right, which was, yeah.
And often the selectmen would ask them, if they objected to it, they would just send it right to the attorney at that point.
Okay.
So it always gets, well, those other drafts we had, I don't think they actually ever got to the. Final review process because everything got jumbled around between COVID and the land use office disappearing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But yes, absolutely, I think we should. Yeah, and if, like you have been putting in a lot of work on this thing, and it's not necessary that a volunteer do that, but if, if we get it sculpted, it saves us a lot of time with the consultant.
Yep. Yep, yeah, I'm not complaining about, anything I've done, I'm glad to do. And I think it has helped advance it, but I just think. You know, that was my preference, I stated a long time ago, in terms of the timing of bringing in the consultants, I wanted us to get things as far as we could, then send it, so I'm just saying now, we're getting, most of this stuff is, in my view, close to final draft form for what we can do, and now like.
Yeah.
The others to look at it.
Yeah.
It would be nice to see it in this form.
Yeah, we, I think we have now gotten a couple of those that we're handing out today, so we can look at those.
Yeah.
Maybe not tonight, but you can look at them, this tiny home one needs to get into that format.
Right.
So that, just, just so you know, that, what Bernie pulled out, the actual definition in the, in the state law is that whole thing, but I would say we could say, just for the definition, or I would suggest perhaps we could say tiny home means a living space permanently constructed for uses, permanent living quarters, period, and then in 514, tiny homes, you know, put in the actual standards in 514.
I'm officially brain dead, so.
I think we should, yeah, I think we should, no, I think that, that's good, we should, we should shoot for that as our.
Like waves over.
Rough draft.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so Chris, you have that, do you have?
Tiny houses, 514.3.
Three.
Yeah, so you have a section of the ordinance for each one of our five?
Yeah, rentals 5.30, solar panel 5.20, well, mixed build, mixed use buildings.
Uh, what do we do?
Right.
Sorry.
Well, I think, I think just grounding it in the ordinance is going to give us our. What we need to suffice for the, for the deadline tomorrow.
So, do you want me to, right now, it stands as, that's including definitions, you want me to hold them?
Let's get rid of that, no, I think we only have five things going forward.
Right, well, definitions, does that fall under any?
That's gone.
That's, okay, so.
Yeah.
So rentals, solar panel, mixed use tiny home, and mineral extraction, performance standards.
Yeah, do you want the number for that?
Yeah.
It's page 52, it would be 5.29, no, 5.9.2.
Okay. Yeah, because, you know, at least Jennifer can look them up. You know, if she has any questions tomorrow about them.
Right, well, let's see if we can plug in the mixed use buildings.
Yeah, I had on our notes from previous that we would make that O in 2.73, mixed use building.
Yeah.
All N's except for commercial A and C.
Yeah.
Mixed use, which would be ours. And then we had a definition, I do have a note about.
Did we get a response back from the? Consultant on the speculative change to the definition?
Did he have mixed use?
I don't think we do.
I thought we had mixed use.
Well, we, we were going to change it to mixed use buildings.
Yeah.
Because we have mixed use, mixed use district, and then we were just going to use the. Do we have any sort of performance standards for that?
Well, my note was. The performance standards, look at Gavin's input at 511, which is the good neighbor.
Yeah.
Like buffers and.
Right, so maybe we don't need to. Actually have standards per se for, for the buildings, we just need a definition and plug it into the land use chart for that one.
Yeah.
We rely on the good neighbor policy as our standards.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I did hand out the proposal.
Yeah, I haven't looked through those yet.
I looked at that and I don't think that is the most current.
Oh, because he has the changes that we asked him to do.
I'm not sure.
You know.
I'm not sure. Can I just ask, in terms of what you need for Jennifer for tomorrow?
I think we've got.
Do you have that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Any other discussions are not related to that? To what you need for her?
I don't think, yeah, I think.
Do we need to vote on these separately, can we just vote on, or do we have to vote on?
I mean, I'll, I'll vote that we put those five items forward to the warrant.
Yeah.
And we don't need to get too technical about, yeah.
Right, I just think, I think it would look better.
Sure.
You know what I mean, I think if we don't vote on, someone might question it, am I correct?
So motion is to put forward as warrant articles. Solar.
Yeah.
Residential rental. Tiny houses. Mixed use.
Yes.
And what else, mineral extraction.
Performance standards.
Performance standards, I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's.
Great.
So we're not tackling anything else this. Year.
Right.
Okay. I didn't get, there was something that came back on mixed use?
Yeah.
I don't think it's the most current.
Um, I handed it out.
Because I know we talked, one thing we talked about was the goofy urban.
Oh, yeah, there's a little bit changed, but there are no performance standards, right?
No.
Yeah.
It's mixed use structure instead of. Well, it's mixed use structure instead of buildings, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Mixed use structure, building or structure with a variety of
I understand you got to it.
Okay.
I started to do my secretary
Okay, well, I wouldn't, I, I'm, I'm approaching brain death myself. I was gonna say, I'm either going to excuse myself or move to adjourn, and I have no problem if you guys wanna keep at it.
I just want, I'm pretty much done, but I just wanted to bring up the executive secretary again. Just because once again, we're found without a, I mean, Bernie's been gracious enough to
Right.
Take notes ag- again for us tonight. Which is great, I mean, that's all we need to do.
Yep, and we actually don't have to do that by law, it's being filmed.
Filmed.
That constitutes minutes.
Right.
If that were not being filmed, then we would have to have written minutes of motions and votes.
Like last, like last time.
Like last time.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So this
I just, yeah, I just feel like it would be a benefit to the board to designate someone
Have a designated person.
Just because we we need help in that department.
Yeah, cuz the minutes get lengthy.
Well, the, the minutes
They don't need to be
They don't need to be, they can just be the motions and the votes.
Right, but they, they need to be available for reference.
Yes.
You know, that was my biggest hiccup that we encountered. But I, I think we can put off voting on it until we have the full board here.
I was gonna say, I'd nominate Pat.
Oh, there we go, we could get it done tonight.
I've tried, I've tried to talk her into it. She's not budging, she's a tough cookie.
I'll second that.
Well, is there any reason why we couldn't just alternate at meetings, take turns? Just someone do it, you know, to address at the beginning of the meeting, who's gonna do it for tonight, and just type it up and email it. The other, you know, one of the benefits to that is, if we have someone who's designated and then they're not here, what do you have to do? Ask someone to do it.
Right.
Mm-hmm, it's true.
It's the thought.
I just don't wanna, I don't know, I something needs to be resolved.
Right, you haven't been going on that for what, two, almost two years now?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it yeah. Yeah, so I guess if we, as long as we designate someone at the start of each meeting, that's covered for now.
Yeah, maybe you're just being humble, Gavin, and you really wanna do it, and you just don't wanna say it.
He, he does keep bringing it up.
You could do it.
Yeah, well, I can't do it because I can only be one officer at a time.
Oh, that's an officer?
Being a vice chairman is, is an
No, that is, but it's
The executive secretary is the third officer.
Oh, it isn't, oh, that's right, you brought that up as
If Chris and I were absent, the executive secretary would have to run the meeting.
I see, okay.
But that's like, it's just a technicality kind of, but
Yeah, got it.
I can't actually become executive secretary, but
Alright, so
To be continued.
Right. I threatened
Right.
Hope that we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
God, I'll second your favorite, all in favor?
This time I'll write it down, who did it.